Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is 6 o'clock. We are in the third floor meeting room for the regular subfloor meeting on Tuesday, December 17th. Called meeting to order in addition to the agenda for routine administrative matters and the pressing matters that will require re-adication at future meetings.
I have none, but if the board wants to weigh in on the price of the Hedy Green motel, this would be the time to do so and suggest an addition to the agenda. But I am not suggesting that.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Who's along will approve the minutes of November 26th and December 3rd. Need motion.
Do we want to add that without your ask?
Yeah, that was your chance to add it.
Well, I mean, I'll just go ahead and add it. You should have. Well, I thought you were trying to move along. I wasn't sure.
Well, again, I was picking up on that business. So that's whatever.
But if you want to take action on it, it needs to be an amendment to the agenda.
Well, I'll make the motion to make an amendment to the agenda and include the topic of the Hedy Green on this agenda.
I second the word discussion.
Are you going to put it on the end, six?
Well, maybe we should put it after the listers. It needs to be more than discussion. It should be for action. If you want to take action, because it's ready to go, unless you want to delay it another three weeks.
We don't have to take action.
No, you don't. No, but if you want to take action. If you want to take action, you can't say that it's an item for discussion. If you want the option of taking action, you cannot say that it's only for discussion.
Right. Okay, so I can retract that part and...
Motion to add...
Well, might we have an option to take action after discussion?
Think so.
As long as you don't limit yourself to discussion, which is the language that is the one that...
Right. So what's the language you propose?
How about add Hedy Green motel price to the agenda after the Lister's office?
Okay, that's fine. So looking for a second.
Second.
Motion to make a second to add the agenda Hedy Green for possible action and discussion, which is, I would say, just not discussion, but possible action. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those who would vote in affirmative, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. It will be under errors and omissions to aye. And the others? Okay, let's go to approve minutes of November 26th, 2019, and December 3rd, 2019. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd, 2019, and to approve the minutes of November 26th, 2019.
We're second.
Second.
Any discussion, current deletions, additions?
I have some questions from the December 3rd one, but perhaps the answers will be in the budget discussion.
Okay. Anyone else? Move along. Public comment on Ivan's Mountain on the agenda, three minutes per se. Seeing none, move along to the manager's report.
Okay, a few things. Thanks to Rockingham Coffee Roasters for the tree, the holiday tree. That's a thing, right, in the square. They donated the tree, which is great. Road sand is available, but the Blake Street shut, as I think people have heard. We had a lot of folks there on Friday. The ribbon cutting at Robertson Paper Mill went well. Been doing out for outdoor event on a cold day, which is good since the governor and Peter Welch were there. The VCRD community visit, step two, will be January 8th at Town Hall in the evening. So I hope we get a good turnout for that. The rec will be open next week. You know it's a holiday. The rec will be open Monday, Thursday, and Friday from noon to 5:00 for kids who need somewhere to hang out. Trucks are being repaired. We can talk more about the second truck, obviously. We had an accident. It's being repaired. Mike is still out. He'll be coming back next week is the hope. Once his doctor clears him to come back. In the meantime, people need to pay attention to the announcements about clearing the parking lots. Depending on how much know we get tonight, that may happen tomorrow or may happen at a future time. At the Opera House, the movie White Christmas is showing Wednesday and Thursday. We're going to be on Christmas Eve next week. We're going to be closing the office at noon. That's when the clerk's office closes also. And obviously, it will be closed on Christmas Day. Since we have an updated nuisance ordinance flowchart, we're just trying to get it perfect before we post it. And just have you all there, gentlemen.
Mr. Todd, move along.
Ben.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. And Ben is not... Supposed to let the public know that Ben is not here because he's working. He works for the town of Westminster, keeping the road safe. Thanks.
Moving on the agenda. Number one is ratify additions of December 3rd, 2019 agenda. And on the memo page here from the manager, there is a recommended motion. So I want to take the motion.
I move to ratify additions to the December 3rd agenda, including approval of minutes, the manager's report, review of agenda items for the next meeting and joint board meeting, and approving orders, bills, and forms.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those who vote in affirmative would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Listers office, errors, omissions, and additions, grand race, 2019, 2020.
So I'm here representing the Listers. We have two errors and omissions. You have a handout on them. One is for 31186 for both the town and village. It really was a piece of property, James Plumbing, that they sent us a personal property. And we filed it and then realized that actually their personal property was in Westminster. So that's the first one. The second one that just came to white today, we had a nephew of the owner came in today and he had his tax bill as well as a copy of the tax map. And on the grand list and in our system, we have the property listed as 10.2 acres and the deed that he had and on the tax map. It's actually a two-acre plot. We went back and kind of looked and this could have been this way for a while and just was never caught. And so that affects strictly the town for $235. So the motion that is in front of you, the town would go to 54686 and the village would remain at 31186.
Questions? Didn't that first one, Great American, didn't we do that one last year too?
You know where we did that? We did that at abatement. So they basically came in because they had already paid their taxes. So this is really to remove it from the grand list. So the abatement took place, whatever, four weeks ago at the abatement here in Peter.
Anything else? Anyone else? Okay, we need a motion to approve the errors, omissions, and additions to the grand list.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the errors, omissions, and additions report for the 2019-2020 grand list estimated by the Listers to reduce the grand list by $546.86 for the town of Rockingham and the village of Bell Falls, $311.86, and to authorize the select board members to sign the report.
We're second.
Second.
Motion to make a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed would say nay. Motion carries. The manager's coming around. Okay, go two-way. Hedy Green motel discussion.
Right. And this item has to do with the sales price for the Hedy Green motel. The town does not technically own the property. They, our attorney, has taken over the property as part of the process, probate process. And they are considering, they spoke with a broker who recommended $65,000. And I, you know, I mean, that's a professional person's advice. I have no reason to think that that's not a good strategy. But when I let everyone know, there were some comments about it. So this is your opportunity to...
Well, then actually, who does own the property now?
The attorney. They have, they have control of the property. Because one of the reasons we went through this process was so the town would not own the property. We didn't want to get stuck with it, as we had in previous instances. So the town does not own it because we did not want to own it.
Well, then who would get the $65,000?
The creditors, the process that they go through.
Including back tax?
Sure, sure, of both the town and the village. If there's any mortgages. I mean, there's a legal hierarchy.
But is that enough to cover all their...
I don't think so, to cover all the debts. I doubt it.
Isn't it true that the town knows the first lien holder?
I believe the town and the village are equal.
I think, yeah, well, I think the municipalities is the first one on the list. If they sell for more than the taxes due and penalties, that's all we'll get. Anything left over goes to whoever can fight over it, as far as I'm concerned.
Is there not a statute? Because I was under the impression that there was, that the municipality or municipal government, town or whatever, is first precedence on sale of anything like that.
Yes. I don't know if they're, if they're higher than a first mortgage, you know, taxes are higher than a first mortgage.
It was my understanding that it is.
Okay. Very well. Good. Do you happen to know that?
You know, off the top of my head, I don't know, but I believe that Stefan is correct.
Okay.
I think Aunt Kuna mentioned that when we went to the...
Okay. Yeah, I haven't had a chance to go back and double check on that.
I think the mortgage company, they just washed their hands of this because it went through the, that's why we couldn't do anything about it until the mortgage company said, okay, we're not pursuing this anymore.
Okay.
I believe.
Yeah, that's pretty common.
It is. It's, that's why we didn't...
But I really don't think, I mean, what it will, what someone will pay for it is not really related to the debts on it. They, it's, the market will decide what someone will pay for it.
We, as the town of Rockingham, funded the court action to derive this executive, correct?
No, I believe their fees are going to come out of the sale.
Right, but it was through the initiative of the town of Rockingham, right? That's what I understand.
I think we were going to pay some, $500, I think is what Steve told us.
What I'm saying is, I understand...
Listen, we said it would cost, but it hasn't gone through the whole process yet. And I believe he's going to take his fees out of that.
Understand the role of the executor, but I mean, I believe it's under purview of this board, the town of Rockingham, the select board initiated this action to go through this court process with this attorney so that we are ensured that we have some control over that. And hearing that we don't own that, I mean, I wasn't asleep at the wheel when I sat here for those meetings, so maybe I had a misconception, but I doubt it. My concern over the price of $65,000 is we were, somebody was supposed to come back at the time, I think Shannon, we asked a question as to what was old. I know it was asked at the village meeting too, what was old to the town? What was old to the village?
Right.
Okay. Then it was also some discussion of, do we have those figures by chance?
No, or not. I mean, I have, Shannon's been out. She's ill.
The other criteria, my understanding was that if there was a prospective purchaser or buyer of the property, that they had to meet a certain criteria, whether it be with the financial plan or however, that they were able to have the means and wherewithal to do something with the property other than just letting it sit there again.
Right, we did discuss that. So, okay.
One thing I don't like is representing people and giving up our rights if, you know, if that is something we took the initiative on to get control of. I understand, again, the role of the executor, but I think this board, I would have felt better if this board was consulted before we came up with the price and at least had some discussion on it. So when I saw the email, I was all ticked off because we have an obligation to get as much as we can to take care of what's old to us and the village.
Right, well, the email was to give you this opportunity. So no decision has been made. It hasn't been listed.
Okay. The other thing too is depending how they go about listing it, you involve a broker or a real estate agent, there's usually a commission involved. So that's a cost. That's an expense, you know?
But the other reason for letting folks know about it would be, once there's a price, if you know someone who wants to purchase it at that price before it's listed with a broker, then there's that opportunity.
And something, I don't, I, I'm not going to ask Paul, we won't put you on the spot ring, as to what the value is of it or what you think it might be able to sell for, what the Listers have that. And I didn't look that up.
I have not looked it up, but for some reason, $32,000 sticks in my mind right now is what we have it listed at. And that's because we have it at salvage.
Sure, you know, I understand that.
And so I think the building is about $5,800 and the rest of it is for the property.
What I'm getting at is if we're trying to sell something, I think it's usually in our best interest and reasonably to start it out higher and work our way down to the 65 if we have to, or wherever it may fall. And the examples I give of that are some property we had on Green Street that was involved with the sale and another piece of property we have for sale in the village here above the town. So in the future, I'd like to maybe see things a little differently, a little bit more transparent.
I don't think anything was not transparent because that's why...
Well, I'm not saying it wasn't. I'm just saying I'd like to see it more transparent before that 65 figure got out there. I think, in my, in my opinion, I think it was behooved of the board to have been made aware and had discussion on it at a public meeting.
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
After, after the fact.
And it's not after the fact because it hasn't been listed. It hasn't been listed yet.
I agree that it is, the last we said as a board was give the attorney direction to move forward in the process to sell it, not to sell it, not to hear nothing about it and then receive an email saying, we've decided to sell for this much if you know anyone interested. And I think a critical part to the price, to the process, is the agreement Stefan mentioned that any potential buyer, we have an agreement or a contract to fix it. Because your response to him was...
That was part of the discussion, but I don't remember where we ended up.
That it's, it's going to be sold without that.
Whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I can go back in time. I can't imagine getting a reasonable price with, with that kind of condition on the property.
Well, I went and watched the, watched the thing at least five times. The impression I got was that there was an understanding, there was going to be some criteria there, as Guy Tonlin just mentioned, so that we're not in this predicament with a future owner in the future. To me, it's clear to, to the average person watching, I have to say, haven't reviewed it.
Right. Well, I couldn't have the attorney back here. I think one thing that we talked about too was updating the land use regulations so that whatever, whoever has that property is guided by the right land use regulations and, and doing that in time for their property sale, which we haven't done that either.
And the last one I want to mention, unless it goes on any further discussion wise, there was some members of the public here that expressed their views or their thoughts and didn't want to see certain things at that property. So I think, again, when I talk about transparent, I realize, yes, we had a public meeting on it, but I just don't think we encompassed everything that we should have. And before it sold this time, I'm under the impression from the meeting that, again, if there was a certain criteria established, that I don't think it's really going to affect the price. If you have someone who's upfront and honest and integrity, that we're going to do this with this property after we purchase it, I don't think it's unreasonable to require certain elements in an agreement to make sure that they have the wherewithal to do that so that it's not sitting there for another 10 years as it is. And we don't have any control over it, other than some of the criteria you're talking about, which may well, or this is a legislation that may not be yet.
Right, right, right. Well, I'll, I'll tell them to hold off if you like. I mean, if that's the will of the board, you can hold off putting it on the market.
I don't know if I'm...
Well, I think if we fill the criteria we're discussing, an agreement, because we've waited this long, we've got it at the point where we want. So now let's make sure everything's in order moving forward so we're, so we're never in this...
Yeah. Well, we might want to talk about it in executive session, actually, since we're dealing with sale of property.
I think it's great that we've come this far. I think it's important that, you know, you never know. You never know what that's worth to someone. So if someone buys it, we want to make sure they have good intent and they butters and everyone and, and someone might fix it, someone might take it down, and we don't know, but they're going to, they have to do one of the two.
Right. So I don't know if we can have an executive session at this meeting or not, if you didn't already say that you wanted one. So it might have to just be the next meeting. I don't know.
Well, I think it definitely would be nice to have an executive session if we're going to be discussing real estate, which is well within our authority.
I would think we also would want the lawyers involved because, I mean, this is their, this is probate, which is different. We don't own the property. This is probate. There's legal issues. I don't know how much control we really do have over conditions of the property. So I think we need legal advice on...
But when, when we sent him off with our direction, that was part of our direction.
It was right.
Part of the conversation. I just don't know exactly where we ended up.
Yeah. Was he not working for us when he came here and we had this, we had this discussion? Yes, he was.
Yes, but it's not our property. So there's, might be some issues here that we are not quite aware of. I think we need, we need the lawyer. It's not our property. If we didn't own it, if somebody else decided due to probate, they could have sold it and have absolutely no, no restrictions on it.
Right, if somebody else had.
But we paid the lawyer in it.
But I just don't know, I don't know the legality of it all. And I think we need to have a lawyer here to, to guide us through this.
Why don't I schedule it for January 3rd?
Because I'd like to do it.
Okay. Okay.
And let's schedule an executive session.
Right. Okay.
Okay, we finished with this?
First thing on the agenda is sort of my lawyer.
Right. We'll have it the first thing, so we're...
Let's maybe meet at 5:30. If it's an executive session.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Yep, so it's just an I'm going to be overseas, so five thirty.
Oh, oh, is that...
That's okay. I'll be up in the hour. Be jet lagged.
All right, moving along. Finance office, Shannon's not here, so I guess you got the bill.
I get to pinch it, yep. So if you saw the village meeting, this is similar proposal. What staff is proposing is to change the health insurance options that are being offered. This change is proposed to take effect for the January 1st open enrollment. It's, it's pretty, pretty quick. We'd like to eliminate the platinum plan, but continue to offer the gold and silver plans. At the same time, what we want to do so that there's no negative impact to employees is increase the reimbursement amount so that the out-of-pocket for the employees will remain the same. The net annual savings to the village per employee, and this assumes that employees will move to the gold plan and use their entire reimbursement, would be 2,800 roughly for employees on the platinum plan, $1,850 for employees on the employee spouse, I'm sorry, the first number was for family, the 2,800 was for family. And then 1,800 for employees on the employee spouse plan, $1,700 for employees on the children, platinum plan with children, and then 676 for employees on the platinum plan for individual. Of course, it gets kind of complicated when you look at the health insurance. So we have various tables that we can go over. The employees would also save because the employees pay 20% of the premium. So if the premium goes down, their amount also goes down. So they would have a net savings. And the change would also reduce the cost of our incentive plan because the incentive is based on, maybe it's open. The incentive plan is based on the highest cost plan, which is the platinum. So if now it would be based on the gold plan, it would be less expensive to the employer. So let me... Shannon is on, available by text. I believe she's supposed to be watching. And the only thing missing is just a double, double check that the coverage is the same. It should be, that's what Blue Cross will show us told us, but we want a confirmation in writing. We are still waiting for that. If that's not the case, then we'll have to go take a step back on this because...
Excuse me, I just made copies of the Lister card from the Hedy Green.
Oh, great. Oh, thank you. Okay.
So it's in at $20,900. So I just wanted, when I kind of quoted the 3200.
That's what it's salvaged.
Yeah, and that's undersalvage. And so the land's in at 15 grand, or the building's in at 15,000, the land's in at 17,900. But then there's some other things that come into the commercial, which is water sewer that you really don't see. But that's the Lister card as it now sits on the grand list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so save that to the next meeting. So the total, including avoided costs, we expect that the town would save next year is $16,727.
Okay, on the manager's memorandum, there is a recommended motion to get on the floor and discuss.
I move to approve health and transplant for 2020 as proposed by staff.
We're second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Questions from the board?
So this, we, what, the incentives that we had?
It would lower the price of the incentive, the cost of, it would lower the, what employees receive for incentives and also lower the cost to the employer for the incentive because the incentives would be based on a lower price plan. But they'd still be 50%.
Was there not any discussions? I understand there was to eliminate the incentive program?
Not, I don't know what you mean by incentives. I mean, we're not proposing to do that.
You weren't proposing, but I thought, I know it came up with trustee board, but maybe it thought it'd come up in the select board also.
There's been proposed, talk about reducing it, but we understand that that's a negotiable item. I'm sorry, there's a cost of reducing the percentage. I'm sorry, there's a cost of reducing the percentage, the, the fifty percent to a lower number.
Is that what you guys discussed with those trustees? I believe that was...
Oh, you discussed it multiple times, yeah. And gotten advice from the attorney that that's something that needs to be negotiated.
Because I know it needs to be thirty-three percent, then it got jumped a couple of years ago to fifty.
My understanding, it was fifty previously, then it was reduced to thirty, and then went, at which time a lot of employees went on the insurance, which cost the town and the village. And then it went back to fifty, and then employees went off of the plan. Now, fifty is a very high amount. I mean, that's unusually high.
So do we gain anything by, by playing with the percentage?
You would, but you also gain something by reducing the number that it's a percentage up. So if it's fifty percent of a lower amount, it's...
Right.
So that's, that's what this does with leaving the fifty percent. So it, it saves money. And it saves money most, a lot on the incentives.
I guess what I'm going at, if we went, if we were to reduce it to thirty percent, I realize we're going to get less there, but is that going to create a massive exodus to the insurance plan? And then that goes up. And so what we're trying to accomplish, the one move is negated by the other, which is probably going to be the case.
If you went from fifty to thirty, yes, you might encourage people to...
You just said the last...
Because that is what happened the last time.
Right.
Right.
So history will come round to bite us again.
It could, yes.
Any other questions? Questions from the public?
Oh, just, I thought it used to be thirty-five percent.
Oh, did it? Okay, I, I don't know. I had heard thirty, but I don't know.
Any else have any questions? Most was being seconded. All those in favor to approve the health insurance plan that's proposed by staff would say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed would say nay. Most are curious.
All right.
Okay, here to date financials.
Yep, so this, there's a memo. First five months of the year, forty-one percent. We're looking to come in at budget. No items that we are aware of that would cause us to miss revenue or exceed expenses. Couple of things Shannon put in it you might have noticed. Animal control officer, over budget because three months of FY nineteen were created in July of FY twenty. That was a timing thing. Insurance is paid twice a year, so even though we're at forty-two percent of the budget, it's fifty percent of the payment. So we should net out at a little under budget. Telephone and internet expenses, what that actually is, is there were some, we're upgrading the internet service and there's some equipment that needs to be, that has been purchased. And I'm pretty sure that that is part of that, those payments. So some of that equipment needs to go into a capital account rather than an operating account. So that's something Shannon and I need to figure out when she gets back. And then the Westminster taxes were returned to us. We're still on budget. The refund was put into revenue. And then highway rebate for the lights we purchased, for the garage, and then uniforms and boots. It's at eighty-eight percent. Expended by far the most we've owed for the year. Again, the insurance issue, we pay twice a year. Pavement maintenance is over budget. Oh, not over budget for the year, but, oh, I'm sorry. This overage is from the class-two paving grant. The rest of the overage doesn't come out of the paving reserve. So that's, we need to make an adjustment for that. And then a carryover, which it doesn't describe what it is, so I need to look at it if you have a question on that.
Okay, questions? I'll kick it off. Page six of seventeen. Just a question. I don't know the answer, but I'll ask it.
Yeah, what the heck?
Under Town Hall, you have janitor wages and then you have custodial services. I think custodial is contracted.
Yes.
Person. And the wages for janitor, is that part of Bruce's?
Yeah, and there should be an actual there because we're obviously part with the year.
I have that question mark too, but I just wanted before I stuck my nose in that, to make sure I was talking in the right category.
Yes.
Now, if you go on page seven of seventeen, look at the expenses for recycling. CFC removal expense, well, I'm recommending an increase on that line for revenue. Is Shannon still working on those numbers?
Yes.
Okay. Because we're at eighty-three percent, so our costs are far exceeding our revenue on that item.
Right, that's also subsidized by the state, so I'm not sure how much, if we can charge for that or not, but...
The CFC...
I thought, I'm pretty sure that's subsidized.
Electronics, I know, is a state thing.
Yeah, electronics is explicitly...
But I didn't know CFC was, that's a tax inquiry tomorrow.
Okay.
That was all on us. Because they won't take the stuff, the metal out of there until those things are certified that they've been entered.
Okay.
Because they have a private guy comes and does it, and I think it goes to the state.
All right, well, yeah, so let us know what you find out and we'll figure that out.
Okay, thirteen of seventeen on the highway. This is on revenue. If you look, I'm going to guess where they pay it, maybe twice a year?
Looks like it, yeah, like on the class one.
If it's only fifty percent on, on that, we've got budgeted twice that, so.
Right.
And I noticed differential pay on highway personnel is at a hundred and thirty percent.
Right, but that's a new line item. Is that a new line item? Yes. So that was kind of a, we were guessing at that one. It's, it was a component of wages previously.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
And you do have in front of you the library year-to-date, but it was, we're only seeing the minutes in there. So they were creating stuff to put it up, if anybody want to look at that. When do we get to the library?
Yeah, and can we, actually, can we go back to page thirteen? I just want to point something out that I, when I was looking at this today. If, if you look at total highway personnel, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand. This is the budgeted number. And then employee benefits, benefits, three hundred and eighty-two, so roughly half is benefits, which is a lot. And then when you look at the benefits, health insurance, it's two hundred thousand of that. I mean, it's just...
Fair enough.
It's, so health insurance is what we need to keep looking at.
Everybody in the state's high on health insurance.
Yeah, but, but what you did tonight is a good step forward, and we have some other thoughts for future years.
Good town hall, you have some?
Sure. I saw somewhere in Orders of Bill and Warrants, a large payment to employee pension, right? Anybody else see that? But in your pension category on page seven, you're showing nine hundred and fifty dollars spent. This is dated twelve-twelve. I'm trying to find the large payment for the pension.
It could have been made, was it made hidden?
This is dated twelve-four. This is dated twelve-twelve, so is it... Is this significant? So I'm just wondering, which is not up to date? Is that accurate?
I guess the most recent one would be...
Be the twelve-four one. Twelve-eleven one, actually.
But the year-to-date financial is dated twelve-twelve.
Well, you're looking at the warrants.
I know, but hers is dated the day after this.
Oh, okay.
So I was looking at the warrants from twelve oh four. What, what day is the payment? You say you're looking for the payment?
I saw it the other day, but I didn't get old.
There's a little one with the old pension in the twelve oh four.
I'm sure I saw a big one. I didn't highlight it because it's, I don't know. I guess, but the size of it cut my attention, so I... Perhaps I'm wrong, but I...
Well, do you want me just to find out? I mean, I won't know if I'm talking right.
Is it normal that we only spent, we only paid nine hundred dollars for that line?
The Beamer's pension, November twenty-three, seven oh seven.
I don't know.
Was that it? Twelve-three?
What date you got on there?
Twelve-three, nineteen. We can look at this. One-ten, one-ten oh one.
Okay.
Page two of six on the tour.
Which date?
Twelve-four, nineteen.
Page two of four, two of six.
Yeah, Dan, we found you at the bottom, set the line from the bottom. There was twenty-four thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Can we look it up?
I, I can't find there's several, two and four. Well, sure, what's that? Twenty-three?
November. It's twenty-four thousand from twenty-three, seven oh seven.
Once a day on the twelve-three.
Oh, yeah, it's dated twelve-four, no.
So that would be my question.
Is how frequently pensions pay?
Or is this, which is not up to date? If we've, in the chart we're looking at today right now, her prepared year-to-date financials, it's showing nine hundred dollars in that line item. And we've wrote a check.
Well, we should have, there should be an old pension and a new pension.
Right. No, it's a, it's a, she's wondering why it says nine fifty on a period five and all. And then we've got twelve-four is, this period five goes from November, I think.
Well, this nine fifty, that's just general fund employees, for one thing. It doesn't include highway or the village folks. And, actually Shannon is maybe responding? So that's, that's one reason.
The word highway pension and...
That would be in the highway budget. That's, that's on page thirteen, under Beamer's. And there's, there's two actually areas. There's employee retirement and Beamer's. And one of them so far is sixteen hundred, one of them is seventeen thousand.
I see in the town general fund, there is a pension, amount of pension of twenty-four thousand nine sixty-seven, I believe.
Okay, we pay each payroll, is what Shannon's telling me.
Twenty-four thousand dollars?
Yeah, and that's some of the general fund...
It's the liabilities accrued. That's the balance sheet, though, yeah. Yeah, so, so we pay each payroll, so, but it's, so the payment will be for the town and the village together. The, the account where the, it's coming from is separated by fund. So you'll have three different funds for the village and two, because the cemetery went on.
The year-to-date period five, period, period five or four year-to-date only goes from November, I believe.
Yeah, it says...
So that's why the December payment hasn't been posted. So the next time we get it, it's going to be a big jump in that Beamer's line. Because of that twenty-four thousand, unless that gets split three different ways.
It does. It gets split five different ways, because the village has three funds, three funds.
That was just, it caught my attention when I looked at that.
It caught mine too, but I kind of figured there was some reason why it's in there. Yes, maybe you have a question?
Oh, I, well, I just, I'm unfamiliar with the bill, so I, because I have just seen it.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if I can help at all, but...
Sure.
Um, the statement on the bill was that it was for management of the traditional pension, and it's a quarterly bill.
So the management's quarterly, but then we pay?
I was unfamiliar with seeing that bill. I had never seen it before, so I have questions about myself, but I'll wait till Shannon's back.
And was that for the pension or the Beamer's?
I believe it's for the old one, but I'm not a hundred percent certain, but it was a quarterly payment. And we paid our portion as well.
Okay.
And that's what that twenty-four thousand was.
Okay.
And we were just a little surprised by it, but probably we just had never seen the bill at the library before. So I believe it's for the traditional. It could be all of it, I don't know.
I'll, I'll find out. So is that one payment for twenty-four thousand that you're wondering about?
Yeah, I mean, if that's...
Well, it's quarterly, sure.
Well, but that, but that's for the old pension, which is still inconsiderable, but not as much as the Beamer's. But, sure. Oh, hold on.
But Beamer's...
This one says Beamer's.
Beamer's is the twenty-four thousand, that's why we're...
Okay.
The ICA is the other one, I think, isn't it?
I assume, that would only be for people who have that as an option.
Right.
The other one is just old pension.
Yeah, there's probably the one that says retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Before we changed over, there was still, there's still a lot of people retired from the...
Oh, I know.
I draw it. I remember we had a big jump in the cost of that, we had to make it up.
Yes.
Yeah, last year.
Stock market did help. Yes, exactly.
And hopefully we won't have that again.
Well, well, stock market's doing pretty well right now, I hear.
But we just, we got a plan for the worst, right? All right.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing numbers go on the overtime compensatory report, comp report. Any questions?
Um, yeah, the only significant overtime was highway due to weather. My client said he get, he actually worked forty-three hours, but didn't get any of it because his bank was maxed out. And then Bruce Bennett earned some comp for the heating system being here on the weekend.
Okay, now comes the fun part that everybody's here for. Library budget. Step up from the table now.
So they have your budget, okay, excellent. I'll just write my three-month statement. The proposed FY twenty-one library budget that you've been given is in the amount of four hundred and forty-one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars, of which three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars is to be raised by taxes. This is an increase to the tax revenue of twelve thousand, six hundred dollars, or three point three percent over last year. For fiscal year twenty-twenty, right, for this year, I keep forgetting, we're in twenty-twenty, over here. We are aiming to be on budget, barring any unforeseen expenses. Increases for this year include utilities, pension and health insurance, which are also forecast to increase next year, along with electronic resources, payroll and periodicals. Decreases will be made in supplies, fixtures and property insurance. We will continue to look for ways to economize and to continue with our fundraising efforts, including seeking out grants. This year, we were fortunate to be a recipient of the Vermont Arts Council Cultural Facilities Grant, which will enable us to install exhibit railings in the walls along for rotating art exhibits. I'd like to say that it's important to remember that the library is one of the community's most well-used and valuable institutions. We offer access to a wide range of educational resources and programs, and we provide traditional services along with access to technology, which includes public computers, Wi-Fi and one-on-one tech support, all, all of which are greatly used. In conclusion, the board and I would greatly appreciate your support, and we ask that the select board approve the inclusion of the article for the proposed library budget on the morning for town meeting. And I'm sure you have questions. I can see it. You can see it.
Nah, come on. I, I do notice, though, that your fundraising is at seven percent on the front page of, if I can think. Maybe you don't have this printed out for the expenses.
Oh, current?
Yeah, so period five, you have, you have twelve thousand estimated for fundraising, and you only got eight hundred and eighty bucks in there so far. I don't know if there's some other things coming up in the future before the period.
We've, we've decided to concentrate most of our fundraising with our appeals. We do our large annual appeal this month. We send out letters. We send out letters. We use that also as publicity to let people know what's happening at the library. Um, so that's when we get the bulk of our donations, and last year we started to do a second appeal in May, a postcard appeal. And so that's the bulk of our, of the board fundraising that we do. And then, um, you know, we have miscellaneous fees. The fee for non-residents will be going up in January to reflect the increase in the budget that we've had the last couple of years.
How much would that go up?
It's going up to seventy dollars a year, and people can pay thirty-five dollars every six months, or pay for a year.
Notice your programming, uh, adult, and youth library, this is not in on a front of what we get for expenses.
Oh, right, right.
Um, compared to your budget where you are today.
Right.
The rest of it looks pretty even, but that one looks like it's, you have got eighty-two percent spent of your budget.
This is, um.
Looks like it's mostly the children, the youth library.
This is a small amount of what we spend on programs. We have, um, the friends of the library pay for many programs for the library. So, um, we, after this is used up, we go to the friends and ask them to pay for the.
And is that the sort of, like, summertime programming, that you have more programming in the summer, so you see it?
Big expense for the presenters, yeah, big expense in the summer for the kids. And then, um, the friends of the library also raise funds, which we assist with, um, to buy, to pay for the museum and clocks passes that we have, different museum passes. So, that's why that's used up already. We're still be, um, presenting other programs. And plus, we have many programs that we don't, we have presenters who we don't pay, so.
How about the book circulation? Is that up, down, even, same?
It was, I was just doing the statistics for the state, um, report for this past year, and it was down a little bit for adults, but it was up for kids. And electronic databases are still really well-used, eBooks and audiobooks, downloadable audiobooks, more people who are traveling, you know, use those. But, um, we're busy. It's surprising. I know people, if you don't come in there every day, you don't see how many people visit us.
Now we'll put the.
Oh, I hear that you're visiting now, I hear that.
Now we'll put the X on it. I was the elevator, we were coming.
And it, and it was fixed.
It was fixed.
It was fixed. Before the holiday party last week.
Just barely, yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
You're progressing.
It's a relief.
Yes. We've been asking about it for a couple of weeks.
We know what it's like, so we're happy. That will be fixed for future meetings that we have to have.
Yeah, yeah. Hopefully we're on Lula. Lula's a different category, but it's crazy.
Mr. Putin Donald has some questions for you now.
Yes, I'm sure.
What under your services, tech equipment, what exactly is that?
Tech equipment is our computers, our printers.
You buy new ones or renting?
We do buy new ones. We reuse, usually we rotate them through the library, so if, um, like Sam, who does all our, um, media work, she needs a lot of memory, and it needs, it needs to be a faster computer than anybody else's, so, um, she got a new computer this year, and I got her old computer, because I don't do that kind of work. And so we do reuse, and we don't replace them as often as is recommended. Uh, but we do have twenty-four computers in there, twenty-three, twenty-three and twenty-four computers.
It's just a fairly large line item over the years, and.
It's one of the most used part of the library.
So it's for.
It's for staff and for public.
Computers every year, basically, probably?
Do you remember how many exactly are you, two or three?
It varies a little bit what we feel we need, but we have youth computers, adult computers and staff computers. And we also have the copier, and that's a waste, and that costs us probably fifteen hundred a year.
But it's, it's not like any outside IT stuff? That's not in that line?
No, no, it's just equipment.
Just look. And just going over to your salaries here, can you share how many part-time employees you have?
We have six part-time and three full-time. That would include me.
That three.
Two full-time, one director, we're the three full-timers and six part-time.
Have you tried, or is it possible to get more volunteers to fill positions? I, I just look at the salaries and benefits from the library total more than we, we fund for three fire departments.
We are busy, and I can't imagine volunteers being able to do the work that, rather complicated, actually. Ever since everything got computerized, you know, we have to have regular trainings for our staff to keep up with it all, um.
I just wondered if you'd explored it, if it's just out of reach, if it's something you consider. It's just the large. I understand what you're running and how it works. Some folks think it's expensive and have, have mentioned that to me, that it costs considerably more to run the library than, the fire departments or volunteer departments now, who train, and they're, you know, they have to be the same thing. We use, it's all state-of-the-air equipment. So I'm asking that question for the, for the same folks that have asked me.
Well, we do have, um, people who volunteer. Uh, we have had Vermont associates, um, people who come and work at the library to help get training, and then they go on and work in other libraries, and they're seeking, you know, a paid position. I personally feel like it's a valuable career and, and feel like the, the people that we pay are worth every penny. Of the four, of the six part-timers, two of them are, um, work a few hours, but they've been there the longest. And so they have, they know the history of the town, and they know the history of the library, and they're really, um, great servicing the public and helping people when they come in. So, I know there's rumors out there that we have tons of workers, and they're all unionized, and that's not true. It's the, the full-time people we unionize, not the part-time people. And we still have to meet with them and negotiate the contract. That hasn't happened. But I feel like they're worth every penny. They work really, really hard and do complicated work. Not easy to train somebody and then to depend on somebody to be there every day to run the library and make sure it's doing all that we do. It's hard to run a library for the many hours. They were open from ten in the morning until seven at night, you know, three nights a week, and we're open on weekends, we're open on Saturday. So, I don't think it's feasible. And, and I have to say, one other thing is that every library, the majority of expense is the payroll, because we make everything happen that's there. And then the building, you know, taking care of the building and the equipment is an expense. But, I think we're very well-used of all the.
You mean taking care of the elevators?
Pardon?
What do you mean taking care of the?
I mean, take, you know, whether it's utility costs, custodial costs, elevator costs, roofing costs, all of that. You know, electrical, servicing all the lights and, I mean, it costs money to run a building, that's just like the town hall, you know? But we try to be efficient.
Is this separate? This, is Bruce custodial, or is that SWAT?
That, town fee maintenance, I believe that's the.
There's two separate ones. There's custodial and SWAT?
I think that's, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's SWAT, right, and the, um, town fee maintenance, that's Bruce, I think, and others, right, it's sometimes other officers. And that's a new charge, we started charging.
Right.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? This is our first round, so. Very enough, I guess you're off the hook for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the general fund for equipment budget.
Yeah.
Recycling, I guess, we want to tackle that.
Yeah, and we didn't get as much done, obviously, because Shannon's on here, but can I just go over the fire, um, update, or I don't know if you had this before, the fire department, um, spreadsheet, equipment spreadsheet. So this was, this version is after the fire equipment committee meeting, um, last Monday, I believe it was. And it's the beginning of a, of a plan to start scheduling our equipment purchases, because as you know, these are, these are the biggest, the most expensive pieces of equipment that the town purchases. The town purchases it for all of the, uh, all three of the departments. If we plan ahead and save for the purchases in advance of making the purchase, not only do we not pay, um, interest on as much, if we can still borrow, we also, in theory, earn interest on the money, uh, prior to spending it. This schedule does not include any grants, so this is worst-case scenario. It, it needs to have added to it, um, HOES for each of the departments. We don't have that in, we don't have numbers for that in here yet. Let me just go down to the middle part, the Bellas Falls Fire Department. Uh, the, the yellow squares are the data of purchase of the equipment, and then the green is, is payments. The numbers for the, uh, engine two and rescue one under Bellas Falls, those are actual numbers, and those are the, um, refinanced numbers. So, uh, they're lower than what we were initially, um, planning on paying, and they have a balloon payment out in twenty-twenty-five, so that we don't take such a hit next year, because remember, next year we had that in the lock, in the debt schedule, we had those, the increase, that was the peak year. We're able to have that not be the peak year by, by doing this, and we're, we're going to try to find other ways to reduce that also. But this is what the bank is, is, um, has proposed, and it seems like a good deal. When you look in twenty-twenty-five, the bottom number, um, is in red, the two-eighty, two-seventy-eight, that's still, um, too high. So, um, e- even though I did change some of the numbers, like the top number, instead of being an even row of fifty thousand, lowered that to five. The part of doing things this way is that we have the flexibility to decide the payments. You know, we can move payments forward or later, um, how we want, and by, by planning ahead. I think, Gattana, is it?
Yeah, just the statement to that year, twenty-twenty-five, with that bigger payment, if we were to spread out, hadn't we discussed spreading out, um, Bellas Falls new engine, because it's your balloon payment at the end of that year, right?
Right. I mean, the other thing we could do is renegotiate again next year and have it go for another five years.
Or, or simply increase twenty-twenty-one payment.
Right, but that's what we don't want to do, because that's the peak. It'd be better to increase to twenty-twenty-two or twenty-three. But, but we can, we can make it work if we.
It's updated since our meeting the other day.
Correct.
I see that it's been moved around, and that's great, and then we could probably still move it around.
Oh, totally. Oh, yeah.
Just, I don't know, we had discussed, and, and, um, Saxton River Rescue was very eligible for that grant.
Yes.
I had talked with the chief, I don't know if Shannon, the chief, I talked with Chief Smith, and if someone helps him, like, they're very eligible to get that drunk with that grant because of the year. We could do that and remove that whole twenty-four, sixty, eighty grand.
Right. Well, what we would do is we would show revenue on this. This doesn't show revenue. This just shows expenditure. We'd still show the expenditure, but we'd show offsetting revenue. That's what the grants would do.
That, uh, balloon payment situation or refinance, uh, on engine two, Bellas Falls, can we actually do that? Because the town vote said that it was supposed to be paid over five years. So I'm, I'm just, to give you the reality of.
Yeah.
The vote went one way, and then we're going to put it on the agenda again, or the town, uh, warning to vote again?
We could put it on a warning again. I don't think we have to, but we should at least, um, let them know. We, we talked to the attorney about it, and we talked to the bank about it, and we talked to, um, uh, VLCT about it.
Yeah, I'm just curious if that would happen because of the town vote last year.
Right.
Of how it went, and then now we're going to switch stuff around. I, I don't have a problem with doing it, but I.
I, I think we should do an article. I think that makes sense.
Well, they voted on it once, and, and in that, the amount, but as a specific tax rate, right?
Right.
It wasn't a tax rate, it was a, a payment. It was five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It was just paying a certain amount.
Right, with the, with the possibility of getting a grant of four-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, I think it said five years. I don't know.
Yeah, I believe it did, because, remember, we discussed that, if you go beyond five years, you've got a bond.
Right.
So we were trying to avoid that situation, and that's why I'm wondering if, if by doing that that time, we have to stick to the original vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Because Tunnel was mentioning tax rate, it did cost some pennies to make that payment, which affects, which affected the tax rate. I mean, if you've gotten a grant, okay.
I think it was like, everyone who voted on it was anticipating two cents.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
If we make it go longer than five years, and it's not actually two cents, then we don't want to make the vote again.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so.
Right, right.
So they're not looking at the two cents for longer than five years.
Right.
That's why I would be, so, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, if you want to pay it off. I was trying to get us some room for next year.
Well, no, I agree, no, I think that's a good idea, but I, I just want to make sure if we're not going to get caught in, in a catch-22 here, saying that we voted to go five years on it, and then all of a sudden now we're, we reduce, we refinance, and then we're going to do a balloon payment, I assume in year six.
Um, yes.
So, uh, but now we will oversupply the five-year.
Yes, and, and we talked to the, um.
So as long as we're clear on that, I won't have an issue with that.
We, we may, I'm sorry, I can't remember. I know, we, we talked to the attorneys. I think we need to do an article. I will find out for sure. We may not need to, but i- in any event, we can, we, this is a good thing to discuss, whether or not we need to do an article. We'll, we'll figure that out, because we're going to have other articles.
You know, because then, that way there, you could, you might even want to refinance that, that balloon payment for a couple, three years, to get that, so you're not going to quack.
Right.
Looking at a big payment in twenty-twenty-six.
Right, but that's when our, our debt schedule.
Right.
Goes down from almost a million to about four-hundred-plus, so. Right, but then also, this, this bottom line is just expenditures, it's not revenue. It doesn't include any grants, and we will get grants.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm just going on your, on, on your statement of, uh, that year being, you know, so.
Yeah, and that's why I put it in red. It's, it's kind of good as just an example to show the, the kind of conversations that you have when you start planning this way is, is you're able to, to move things. You know, like, like we can move, one of the Rocky Hill Fire Department trucks, move it forward, move it back. You know, we can, we can schedule our payments if we, if we plan ahead. Um, and we do, the other, um, uh, big conversation in the fire committee, Gattana, please add to this, was just, um, including HOES and turnout gear in the town's budget, which is a pretty big deal. It hasn't been, um, except for Rocky Hill Fire Department. So that's, uh, something where the, the way the. So that's something where the, the way the agreement is written, it says necessary apparatus, and the committee felt that the air tanks and the gear are necessary apparatus, but that hasn't been the way that the town has budgeted in the past. Does, is that?
Yeah, doesn't it read apparatus and, it's worded like.
Something like necessary, there's some.
Yeah, which is everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By getting together and buying bulk and buying, and getting grants and spreading turnout gear out, so if you buy 13 sets at once, they all expire in 10 years.
Yeah.
13 new sets. So you buy four.
I follow that.
Well, I don't know. Right, so for those who weren't there, I think that's, we're just moving forward with new discussion and planning and networking together and purchasing. Essentially, the town buys all of it, so why not, why are we all being separate with them?
And is that something that you tend to get grants for as well, that some of them? I mean, not necessarily hose, but.
It comes and goes. I, I, I feel Chief McGinnis is on it with what's available for grants and letting folks know, and, it's different. I feel if you get together, it would broaden your call numbers or factor, the coverage. So the village doesn't have a whole lot of coverage. In one grant process, they lose out on some, so if you have. Town of Rockingham. So there's other ways to get some bulk hose, get, you know, five sets, FCVs. So I think they're moving in the right direction. All three chiefs were here and discussing it, and finance manager, and they're all willing to get together and help ready grants for that department, or this department, or that department.
And I think there might be grants for hose. And some of our hose from the 70s, which is pretty nuts.
And then, you know, getting it tested. You have to, half of it will probably come out of service. Supposed to get it tested every year, and we had that discussion, it's expensive.
So, so you'll get those numbers. Yeah, right. And what we really should do, and this is, I hope Shannon can figure this out. Basically, have January to finish the budget, and I really think we should take January 28. Just, you guys should plan for that as the final budget meeting. So we have three more meetings, just so that we can be sure we're, we're answering the questions and being thorough. This, the fire equipment, the highway equipment, and what's the other piece? There's another piece of long-term capital should really all be one scheduled because it's, it's all, it's the same dollars. Right, right now, the fire fund is separate. Kind of questioning if it has to be. Maybe you guys can give me some history on that.
Mine is.
Because it all has the same source of revenue. It's all tax money.
Right, my, my recollection was that it wasn't, for example, a fire fund, as you want to term that, that you couldn't, that you couldn't, in the future, cover and, and raid that, so to speak, for, for some other purpose other than fire.
I think every fund should be that way. If you're budgeting money in something, you don't take it unless you're spending it on that.
Right.
I mean, you go on and on about that case.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but, but you're talking is merge it all into one, which I don't agree with that.
And I use the N-word, but.
Or all one.
No, it, it's just, it gets a little, it's. We have a lot of different pots of money, and we have a lot of little reserves or bigger reserves. And when, when it's all tax money.
Right.
We, we may not be getting the best use of the money by having it in all these separate pots.
How so?
Because we just, it's a lot to administer. We, you, you, you'll lose track of balances, and, I mean, you guys.
Not Zanshong you got, or anybody administratively, but we're in the 21st century with all this technology. I don't see.
It's still a lot of accounts. It, this isn't like merging the bank accounts. And, and maybe we shouldn't even talk about it. But, but in terms of planning for capital, it, you have big dollars. There might be a case where the fire fund would borrow from the highway fund instead of borrowing from a bank. Right now, we borrow from banks, and we, we pay interest to banks.
I realize that.
What we could pay ourselves much less.
I think we're getting on dangerous ground there because voters at one point or another said, yes, we need some money in, in a fire fund. Same thing as they said, we need money in a highway fund, or, or the meeting house fund, or whatever. And you ask them for that with a specific purpose. I think they don't plan, or you shouldn't have the intent in the future, gee, we may need to take some from here and borrow. It's kind of, I, I turn this, the sweep account, we've gone through this over the years, and to be honest with you, I'm in such favor, what I would turn like a sweep account type thing. You know, if, if there's something coming up, for example, in highway that needs more money, we come to a public meeting, we discuss it, if it has to be an article, or appropriation, or tap into reserve or general fund, okay. But if it's specifically allotted for, whether it be fire equipment, or cemeteries, or, you know, I don't want to go into a fund to take money out of culprits from the highway to use it for some, somewhere else, someplace else.
No, no, I.
But we do sometimes.
Well, I understand, I understand. With, with certain things like reserves, if, if someone donates or money for the meeting house, for example, we set up that reserve to, to be restricted to the meeting house, and it should be. What, it's just when I was looking at the fire fund, I noticed that there's really no other revenue. If, if we start getting grants, that would, that's other revenue. Right now, it's just taxes.
Right.
And so, so it isn't as if someone's donating to the fire fund to say, I want, you know, my legacy to go to a fire truck for such and such department.
But they may, they may.
They may, um, yeah, so it, it's. We're, we're just trying to get the best use of the funds. But, and I didn't intend to have this conversation today, but just kind of ended up.
Well, then, then let's have it in the future. I mean, I, I just expressed it with some of my.
It gets done within three weeks, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, no, we can definitely get it done. We, we just won't do as, we'll, we'll stick to the old patterns. Because also, we don't want to raise anxiety either in, in anyone's head.
You have questions?
Yes. So we're saying we have to wrap the budget up in three meetings. I feel we have a lot of work to do here, and I, I meant to ask you earlier, but I didn't get a chance. Since the edits so far, do we have a new tax rate?
Um, we, we're still working off that menu that we gave you with the lower, with, with the.
That was like four cents.
I think it was.
3.9.
It was nine, then it was seven, then we made some more things, and then.
Yeah, we had the update from that one, but the last one you gave us was four cents.
Right, but.
Two and a half cents, we can't do much else because that's voted for the fire truck. I mean, we added something with it anyway because we're going to refinance.
If, yeah.
Four cents.
Hold on, let me see. That's what was in that menu, right?
It's not at four cents.
No, still, it's.
Five, something.
Nine cents with four cents, so we've still got five cents to find something.
Yeah.
Can't do much with, so.
Well, we reduced like two cents in highway fund by postponing equipment purchases and.
I just, if we could get that updated.
Yes, yes.
Budget for our next meeting, or, I'll, I'll just use my marks, but a new, a new tax rate to work with, and then, like, in three meetings, this is one meeting. We discuss a lot of things, we have to make some, some moves here, and.
Right. I don't want to bring the same thing back to multiple times. I think that's worse. I think that's what we did last time.
But I, I agree, it's important for me that.
I'm just looking for enough.
I think, oh, yeah, yeah. And I think the, the January 7th meeting should really be focused on budget, and, and we should have that be the primary item at, at the next meeting, which is.
And it may be, I think we, we come in on Saturdays if we have to do some work here because.
We got to get that down.
Yeah.
About it, it can't stay, it can't stay if the price doesn't increase.
Right, no, it won't.
Especially after from us going down a half a cent last year, and all of a sudden now we're going up five cents, then, you know, we're just asking for trouble.
I know, but it was nice to go down. I mean, it was, we liked it.
It would be nice to go down five cents, and we won't worry about going back up five cents this year.
Yeah, that's the negative side of having a tax reduction. Because it's harder the next year.
When we get to the things, I, I think we, we need to watch our spending, and I have lots of examples. I think that's, that's where we're falling in trouble here. There's some. We can discuss it now, or?
Yeah, or, or you can even be with us individually, but yeah, if you.
I don't want to.
Sure.
For open meetings.
Sure, one of our.
Are we on there? I mean, I don't want to skip around.
We're on budget.
I mean, or you can do it.
We have all these outside IT things. I, I would like to know what those are, because when, when we went with this new IT provider at, at the last minute that we had to go with, that was considerably more money, what we were told was we wouldn't have to pay for outside IT support. Right?
Yeah.
Everybody remember that? There's a ton of checks in here, all labeled outside IT support.
We don't pay for extra support. I mean, there's, we.
Well, that's what they're all labeled on there, like, it was a specific incident.
No, no, we pay.
And we pay this company $37,000, whatever it was, $68,000 to do the job.
And that is what you're paying.
So what are all these individual?
Those are part of that payment.
Well, we talk about making things easier for an accountant. I mean, why would we make individual checks to the same person?
Because those are for different parts of the, different types. We ask them to actually break up their stuff so that we could charge it like village police, wastewater, water. We, we got to charge things to each fund. So they should have, the first three numbers should be different. Yeah, it's, they're not, they're not separate checks, they're just the way that it's going into the. Right, right, right. Program, I mean, into the accounting program. Right, but now we did this past month.
I don't, I guess I don't understand why they all be separated. Because what we were told was, we were getting a company that would take care of everything, that's why we should go with them, because they have the guy who knew everything, and we're paying them a lump sum to do the job. I was questioning why there's all these individual payments or counts with the, the number, the term outside IT support. Has anyone found them yet?
Yeah, well, there's one.
So many asked her, actually.
Yeah, on 12, on, for the 12 form warning on the first page. So it starts halfway down.
Which page?
Uh, page one of six.
Look around.
This is where we, this is where, um. Right, this is where we've had, where I was saying how we're getting, we upgraded the, our, our fiber service, and there are, there are pieces of equipment that we need to be the connectors essentially between town hall, police, and then all the other buildings. And so some of this is hardware, and some of this is our regular payment, and some of this is service that we're going, that we need to use to hook up this new, because it, because it's an upgrade in our system.
Did we budget all this stuff? Where's this maintenance waypoint for, to, to dominate?
Yes, some, some of that.
$1,491. Like, did we budget all this? I don't remember discussing that or putting it in an account when, when we were proposed with going with this new company. It sounded to me that the reason we were paying more was because they provided all this stuff. And, and if we look at the amount we've spent here.
Yeah, this.
That's a lot of money.
Right, and this month.
And did we budget for it?
This was, this month was an unusual month, and some of these expenses are capital expenses of their, their equipment, which needs to go into a separate line item. It's in the, it will be like, for example, in the town hall line item. So what is, yeah, Shannon's saying, they're not separate checks, just allocating the expense, one check per month for the contract, and then one bill for the new work that we had done. So the new work is.
So for $1,491 to the waypoint, what, what is that? That's a monthly?
No, that's, that's the, um, the, the piece of the equipment that is going to communicate with the other parts.
That we paid in addition to the contract with this company?
Yes.
Did we budget for that?
Um, it, we took it out of the budget for town hall. It wasn't explicitly talked about at the, at our last budget, so we didn't know about it. But is it in the budget for? We, we have expenses to cover, yeah, yeah. We had, there's a town hall.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I just don't think you operate like that. If, if, if you just have the money, you don't spend it.
It's not that we just had the money. There was, there was a, I'm sorry, intro.
No, I mean, I, I don't agree. If you, if you budgeted it, no one would spend that kind of money on something that they didn't prepare for.
We, we budgeted a year and a half before, like, like this budget right now that we're working on starts in July.
So, but we picked up that contract when?
The, 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 the equipment that we're getting now is different than the contract. We, we are paying exactly according to the contract. It's a three-year contract, and I gave you guys a copy, and I'll give you another copy. It's in the budget book. We're, we're paying according to that with our regular service. The fiber that, where the service increased, it's, it's part security and it's part just upgrading our systems. Like, for example, the, the issues that we're having with Facebook, with not being able to make our security work, those issues aren't going to be a problem with the new, with the new hardware. We're, we've switched over to a new, uh, it's, it's both hardware and software that is the security stuff, basically, firewall.
Okay. I, I guess I'll use that as an example, I feel, if, if we're, sometimes we, we spend money on things that we didn't prepare for because we look at it that we have the money rather than save the money. An, an example would be paying, budgeting $800 for ski tow wages two years in a row, not spending it, but not having it, spending it on something else.
We didn't.
We should come ahead $1,600, so we don't have to budget it $800 this year.
We came ahead a lot last year. We came ahead the year.
At the rec center?
At the whole, the budget as a whole, the general fund.
I don't look at it like that. I look at what, what you, what you budget things for is what you spend. And when you're out of money in that line, you don't spend more. So we'll look to spend it from somewhere else.
If it's something we need, we look to spend it from somewhere else, yes. Because we budget, our, our budget is so specific, you know, we don't have to budget this specifically. I mean, we can have budget items that are in a bigger group.
I think we spend a lot of time with all these individual things, but the bottom line is, you look at what your bottom number is, and you say, that's how much we have to spend.
But we could hurt our operations by restricting ourselves. Or the alternative is we would over-budget in those line items to make sure that we get everything we need, and that's not good either. So we have to be able to move things around. We don't, we don't buy things that we don't need. I mean, we could have different definitions of what we need, but, but we don't, we have people looking out for the money, and it's not, we don't buy things casually. It's, it's, um, we, we buy things thoughtfully. You know, I mean, this board looks at what we buy, the village looks at what we buy, often both boards are looking at the same thing.
All right, I, I have some more examples, if you'd like, where I.
Yeah, yeah.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
So the Lula stage lift, $326.45, is that for a par that we paid them and didn't need?
I don't think.
Because the elevator's still not working.
Right, right.
So it's $325.
I don't, no, the thing, we actually paid them, it's more than that.
Okay, so.
323, 326.
Well, the other.
What happens is they go and fix something, and then they find that the fix isn't enough, and then they need to fix something else.
Okay, so if, if you replace a par that didn't need to be replaced, I think a lot of places might put the par that wasn't bad. I don't know.
It's not that discreet. It's not that discreet. It'll be a, it's a, it's a whole board for, it's an electronics board, so.
It catches my eye because it's Lula, the thing's still not working. It's $325.
Yeah.
So that's another example. And then $4,192 on a sander for what I. four thousand one hundred ninety two dollars on a sander for what I believe is it's two thousand thirteen one ton.
It could, it could be, what?
Did we need it? Did we budget for it? Was the other one bad?
I can find out. Well, we're not going to buy it if we don't need it. I can tell you that. Tell me what page you're on.
Page three of six. Twelve four.
Twelve four.
Okay, yeah, but Shannon said the Lula was no, it needed to be replaced and it was another part that was broke as well, basically.
Well, the sander could have been anything, but anything from, I'm going to guess it's probably rusted out.
It's plastic.
I don't know if it's plastic. I don't know that.
The one he's had in his truck is.
She said Everett and Mike budgeted for that. For the sander. I assumed that she was talking about the sander.
Well, I saw that too and I wondered if it was Mike's truck or was it one of the Red Town Highway trucks or one?
Yeah, I don't know. That's where I was going. I don't know which one it was.
It's not Mike's truck. This is a, it's not Mike's truck.
I think it is. It's the only G M K one ton.
It's two thousand thirteen. I thought it was his.
Yeah, and it's, is it broke down or nothing?
It's funny, specifically, and then she said yes, but I don't know what the yes was.
What a sad thing.
Um, got a text faster, Shannon.
Oh, we're thirty seconds behind too. I mean, I, I can wait if Shannon has these answers. I can meet with you privately if you want because I have.
Yeah, why not?
I have questions about plaster payment, the leaking propane at the waypoint payment.
That one to me was not that expensive.
The propane?
Did they have to dig the line up or something?
Yeah, paying Bruce overtime for being down there and.
Yeah, they had to dig it, they had to relocate the line. I think it was under a sidewalk.
I have a question about we're paying all states for a flagger. I'm confused about that.
That was on the Burnford Bridge area or something or for the paving, was that?
Oh, yeah, I think that was because it was, right, with the railroad. The railroad had it really specific.
They were doing any kind of choice.
So that was part of the, that was part of the contract. That was in the contract. Um, I, I don't know exactly how the payment was structured, but I know it was in the contract to pay the railroad because they're super picky about having to pay flaggers and, and you got to do what they say if you're on their property.
What, we are, is pest control on the covered bridges? Is that, how often does that get done?
Oh, I don't know, but I can find out.
Well, I mean, I have questions from last meeting that you said the same thing.
I know, I'm sorry. It's, it's been tough, but.
So I don't, I don't want to continue.
But if you want to come in, Shannon would, she can call you tomorrow.
Well, I think if we're trying to reduce spending, these are good things to look at. Needs and wants, that's how I feel. If we, I, I feel like a lot of things have been heating systems, buildings from lack of maintenance. And then we're buying new ones.
Some things happen like maintenance, like the mold, that was lack of maintenance, but now we're doing the maintenance.
But these heating systems, the one at the rec center, the one at the waypoint.
The one at the rec center, yeah, it was a problem.
Okay.
Yep, and now we just maintain.
Are we putting measures to correct this behavior?
Yes, yes.
That's how you reduce spending.
Agreed.
Excellent.
And one of the things we want to do, a problem we've had is the way that we bid the oil and the propane and we bid the maintenance with the oil and propane, doesn't make sense. We're, we're going to bid just for maintenance and just get a contract for maintenance of the system here because this system is just too complicated to trust it to a different vendor every year. It's, that doesn't make sense. Um, so we're, we're going to get a maintenance contract for that.
Yeah, you can do a multi-year, like a three-year one?
Probably, yeah, yes.
That way there, you're pretty well locked in for three years. You know what it's going to be.
Right, right.
Something.
Yeah, and, yes, yes, and it's just, it's not the kind of thing where you definitely, where you want to do necessarily low bid because you want someone who knows the system and is doing it.
Get somebody else in your call that could be screwed up for.
Right, right, and it's expensive stuff and it's important to our, to our functioning.
I mean, while we're on the topic and Shannon appears to be home, do you know if you would have the answers to my last questions? Which would be? Gary was going to explain five thousand dollar line item for economic development advertising. So I'll skip that one.
Oh, yeah, that's.
I asked what the fifty one hundred dollars for maintenance in the rec budget was for when the town has a full-time maintenance employee and building and ground maintenance line item was also in there. And someone said it was for resurfacing basketball tennis courts bi-yearly. So is that, I would, is that correct?
Um, I can ask Shannon, but I think she's the one who said.
So I asked that in the December third meeting.
Since she brought that up, I'm really concerned.
And then one more number. Five thousand dollars was proposed in theater equipments. Who's in hand said the theater committee would be submitting a letter of award next week.
Hasn't happened yet. The theater committee needs to, theater committee is waiting on staff.
Ten thousand one hundred dollars worth of questions. Fifteen thousand one hundred dollars.
Let me, I may. Uh, I'm not sure which page it's on here because I didn't mark it all up, but it was like a tent purchase or was that a tent rental? And then there was some.
There was recently a tent rental for the.
B F A D C.
Yeah, but B F A D C is going to pay that. The town fronted it and B F A D C is going to pay it back.
With, with what monies?
They got money.
Yeah.
They got monies?
They got fifteen, fifty thousand. They still owe us from our, our luck is coming back. We discussed it at our last meeting.
Okay.
Because they got fifty four thousand dollars in the B F A D C account and they were discussing because when they decided this is all done by your politicians, Mr. Welch and the governor wanted a tent, they wanted a speaker and a mic and all this stuff or they wouldn't come.
Okay.
So we went out and got a tent down there and moved it away over there and we lucked out because they had speakers, batteries held out, they used portable speaker with a mic and if that worked out, things locked record, you had to run from quotas of about four hundred feet. Didn't have enough cord to run that far. So, long story short, we, we stuck by and most of us spoke loud enough. We didn't need that, need that mic really, but.
All right.
But that's the deal. Then they rented it down and B F A D C because that was brought up specifically at our B F A D C meeting.
Yeah, and before I approved it, I said, are we, is it going to get paid back?
Because they had liability insurance thing too, so now they're probably not.
Well, we get green, left in their checking account.
By the time we get done playing, so.
And the other thing, when the development director was here, talked in reference to, I guess it was a grant, but it was also some monies in reference to sixty six Acton Street. My question is, as a taxpayer and as a board member, is when you have another governing board or say our sister board or brother board taking an initiative on an, on an action, a legal action with sixty six Acton Street, why am I being asked as a taxpayer and as a board member to fund something on the town development aspect with sixty six Acton Street while the, while the board of trustees is looking at whether it be demolition orders or other orders, uh, you know, the sixty six Acton Street issue.
You talking about the archaeology thing?
Uh, whatever it was, I don't care what it was.
That's what I, is I.
Why would he have that?
He had to fund it.
Well, something to do with they had to check and see about the historical value of the thing because I think Chris was looking at getting a historical agency involved and getting some funds. So I think that's connected, but I don't know why. But why, why my name, why you name, but why is?
I agree.
But. That's a question I guess it has to go back to.
Yeah, was that a, this board meeting or was that?
No, this is the last two meetings ago. It was when Gary was here, South and Back, we discussed the development budget.
What I'm saying is, you know, I can understand if the circumstances were, were different, but you have another board with some governing authority and ordinance that's taken some action which doesn't go in that direction. Um, you know, if somebody wants to have some options, I just don't see why you, you, you and I should be paying for this when it's an about face from the actions that another governing board in this community has taken.
Was it something that was budgeted for? Or was it just a question, a random question?
It was an exasperated money to, to somebody part of the budget.
We asked what it was for, analysis explanation.
All right, all right.
We did check with Gary. I've been thinking about something to do with the historical significance of the building to.
The other question was fifty one hundred dollars or five thousand for advertisement committee from his department. Two questions for here.
Got it.
You know, I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing. I'm just saying I just don't feel it's appropriate to be for us to budget towards when you have, it's contradictory or contradictory to some other board. And maybe if someone's interested, wants to see a building saved, okay, you know, I love history, but we can't save it all. If we took that attitude or an attitude similar to that with Rockingham Paper Mill, that building would still be standing down there and the governor wouldn't have been here on Friday with Senator Condesma. Just, you know, it's a question of what we need to pay for or what we have to pay for and what we, we know.
So bottom line, if we're going to be able to cut another three or four cents off this budget, that's what we're trying to do. That's because.
Three, I would say. Yes, we can figure that out. We need to figure that out. Yes.
I know it's tough to do more with less, but there's a lot of other places besides Rockingham that are being asked to do more with less and also to do trying to stretch the dollar.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, we can, we can debate it here or I'm sure it'll be debated from the floor of town meeting and.
Yeah, there's.
It may be in areas.
It'd be easy to compare to neighboring towns.
Yeah, and that's information that we want to get from you too. And the listeners will have some information. They're, they're actually working on comparing neighboring towns in terms of tax rates. And they should have some information on how our values are going to.
But I mean, that's all nice to have as much information as you can to make your best educated possible decision, but part of my job here is to make this community affordable for the people that live here.
Right, that's part of our job.
So they're able to sustain, stay in their homes.
And.
And I'll tell you, what I've heard a lot from people lately is that they, it's getting expensive to live here. They're looking, some people just said they never dreamed of leaving here or looking at, they could sell their house and get what somebody says it's worth. They'd be moving out of here. I don't, I don't want to hear that. I don't want to see that.
Yeah.
Okay, can we move on here? We're kind of.
Well, it's.
Moving on.
It's good information that, and I, I hear a lot and I feel the same way. My taxes have doubled. Home of my value in many, many places is not taxed near, near that rate.
Okay. So we know we got a target. We got to try and get four cents, three cents on this thing. So they got their job happening. We got our job too, so. Uh, let's move on to item number four, the land lease agreement. And could you share with the board Malcolm's email that you sent?
Yeah, I think I sent it to everybody.
Okay, I looked through everybody's lot because of the.
And was that Mr.?
No.
Okay.
No.
Library guy?
That was the library.
Oh, okay, sorry. If only everyone had name tags, that would be good. Uh, yes, Mal, I, this is a proposed renewal of an existing lease. And I asked Malcolm Potter because this is future cemetery land because it's adjacent to an existing cemetery, if he had any suggestions on the terms of the lease. And he did, and we've given you an amended version. And you don't have to approve this today if you don't want to. We have time because the lease is up in March.
Is he amended version? What'd you say?
You should have. Did you, did you give him? The table in front of you. It's, the way that you tell.
An amended motion or amended version?
No, amended version. I have, I.
What?
The, the lease here. You can have.
Oh. I kind of remember the email, but that's about it.
Do you have?
The discussion.
Yeah, I remember the, yeah, I got, I got the, the recommend, but I don't see what's.
Okay, so is that not very good? Okay.
From what I read, maybe.
So it's just a two-page lease. So what's different is in the limitations on use, partway down it says excluding corn because that was a suggestion from Malcolm. Um, our staff suggested that we ask that they fertilize the fields annually so we don't end up with just dirt that's not, has been fertilized. And then the other concern that Malcolm had was, had to do with the original deed that said that we, the town couldn't use it for cemetery use until the existing cemetery was completely sold out. And, and, but that restriction is not in the lease. That restriction is in the deed. Um, and I think it could be interpreted in different ways, but I'm not an attorney, so I wasn't. I mean, I can speak to that later. I, I can find out.
Did anybody check into the fact that this may be expired anyway with the demise of Mr. DeWolff?
Well, it may, the lease may be, but yeah, it's, it's up to you whether you want to renew, whether you want to do a new lease or not.
The other person I have is, would we want to consider a one-year lease versus a three-year lease? I know it's all done at three.
Oh.
Because they don't have to keep coming out back, not on a door every year, but I mean. Well, I kind of actually like maybe the one-year lease. That's, that's what I was thinking.
Would you like? Sure.
And I do that.
They currently grow corn there?
No, no, it's hay.
They used to?
No.
No, never. It's always hay, which.
What were you worried about the?
Well, the, the good spray that was apparently.
Well, they, they, they got some land on, some lawnmower someplace or another using the cemetery. And they, they spread it and they couldn't go anything on it because it had been sprayed with.
Okay.
Stuff, some, some.
Just hay is what they do.
Yeah, and they haven't, they haven't even seen this. Oh, you know, they did see the revised one. Did they say anything?
Do it one year.
So you want to do one year?
I do.
Is that? Doesn't mind me.
Yeah, we want to.
I mean, we're not looking to use the land for the cemetery.
Is it almost whole?
There is one, wasn't there one body on the, on the other side of the cemetery, cemetery fence? I thought.
I don't know.
I thought there was.
Last time when I'm looking at.
One burial plot. Why don't we say that?
Well, I thought that somebody said that they, they did have a body that, you know, buried part on the other side.
When you mean the other side of.
The fences of the top of the hill.
Oh, okay.
There was one that was, I don't know why it ever got in there or, or for some reason, but you can check the document, but I thought there was one there.
I don't know. Um, I think the other issue that, what I, an issue I have with this is it's not clear what property it is. So I'm pretty sure it's the property that's shown in this crosshatch, but I'd like the less or, let's see to confirm that too.
Is there a warrant D D?
Yeah, well, the deed isn't, isn't clear. There's no, I mean, there's meets and bounds, but there's no, there's no picture or no survey. So another suggestion that someone had was we do a survey the next time this comes up too.
Well, the survey, it wasted money.
A lot of money.
Yeah, I know. I'm not, that's why I had mixed feelings about that. That's why it's not.
I got the rent if you want to do that.
You could do, um, you know, maybe instead of just saying, but except for the corn on this one, just put in specifically just hay only.
Yeah, we could do that and then we don't have to exclude anything else.
You're saying no pesticides. You're saying excluding corn, but that doesn't mean you're not excluding anything else. So if it's by, the only thing that can be planted on the land is hay, then you're. You know.
Yeah, say growing hay only or growing only hay.
I think that's all they use that for.
We used to be wondering about ten years ago when I'm on a farm for. They probably made thirty years ago.
I've never seen corn on that.
Okay, so.
Say you want to change those things and bring it back.
So make it one year. Yeah, maybe I can reference the sketch too, just so there's something that ties the lease to something that's more identifiable.
There's no independent parcel number on that?
No, it just says the warranty deed, and then we put, and we included the warranty deed, and it has meets and bounds, but it doesn't have, um, uh, parcel numbers. So it's logical that it's this, but I would just like it to be, you know, so people don't, in the future, don't have to figure it out.
The other question is, is three hundred dollars annually, is that...
It's, it's not out of line, is what I've found from talking to a couple of people.
Really? Okay.
But if you feel otherwise...
Well, if he's grown hay on and he keeps it cut, you know, you know, it's, otherwise it's gonna get over wrong with... No, I realize, I understand, like, maintaining that, but...
It's, it's just that we, that we don't have to maintain.
Right, right.
Which would be more than three hundred dollars.
It'd be more than three hundred dollars here, but I'm sure if he's, whatever they're doing with the hay, if they're selling it or whatever, they're making more than three hundred dollars. But sorry, I'll call my horse friends and I'll ask them, because I get an idea of acreage there anyways, something like that is true.
There's something you can do with...
Okay, we all settled here on that one. Let's go down to social media policy.
Okay, um, and this, we, um...
We've all learned something from the Burlington.
Yeah, no, we...
Well, I'm looking for it here.
I know, know, and I, I was looking at this and it doesn't specifically cover that, so I want to add something.
Fake accounts?
No, fake accounts. Well, yeah, exactly. On page three, I want to add something that says no anonymous accounts. It does say, um, municipal officials are discouraged from using personal accounts to comment on or post municipal information.
Absolutely.
But I think we need to say no anonymous accounts also. But yeah, the cliche van, the deputy too.
I'm glad, I'm glad that the, the government speech forums, because I was looking at some other stuff and it said that, you know, you should specifically state what you're gonna use a site for.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's on...
Yeah, no, I actually think this is, this is really helpful.
They said in some spot, you can start off thinking one thing, but then if someone is not monitoring it and it gets away from you, then all of a sudden that, that purpose is gone and it just becomes a free for all.
Yeah, so if, if you guys, if everybody read it and you're comfortable with it, if, if, it would be helpful if you could approve it, um, with the condition that it be modified to include no anonymous accounts.
And proposing that it would be, um, comments would be allowed, but it...
Well, no, the way that comments need to happen in a, on a public site is that you, you need to identify yourselves.
Right, but I mean, you have to have a moderator. I mean, I just worry about someone's time, maybe your time, being spent. Because sometimes things can get crazy quickly, and then if we're not monitoring it, we become very liable, so...
Well, definitely.
But at the same time, I think, I mean, I don't know whether, I worry about having comments, so you do want to have... People can comment on the future of Bellis Falls on these other sites, but I worry about comments on our site, only because of the time of, of moderating.
I think if you keep it light, if you keep your content light, public information, and, and I think it should be monitored, and I think ease into it and see how it goes, and then you have the option to ban members and, and delete comments that are inappropriate. You gotta have a thing in your page that says, this is for, it'd be, I mean...
I, maybe, yeah.
But the point then becomes that we're gonna go down another year, be back here looking at hiring an administrator for this account.
No.
That's...
Right, no, I mean, and see, we...
I don't think it's gonna be like some of these other pages. I don't think we need to post about the history. I think we need to say motor vehicle accident, bottom of Red Light Hill.
Right, Sancho. Sancho to open, um, we'll, we'll post just the agendas of meetings and have links to the, um, website.
No, and I, I think that's true. I just worry, I mean, I don't know whether we can, if we adopt this, then we have to go back if we decide to close comments, if it does get insane, or whether this gives us the ability to...
Comments are nice, but they should be a quick follow-up. What I'm thinking of is if you get someone, maybe where you're thinking, or, um, if somebody asks a question and gee, you know, they didn't get back to me with an answer for like a week or three or four days, and now I've got an issue, do we want that responsibility or liability too? I mean, I can see the, putting information on there, but if they want, if they want to ask a question, they can come down here, or they can call you.
Well, well, what we did, on page four, it says the designation of the platform. So on the official town website, we do not allow for public comments. That's just a place for us to get our message out, and it totally needs to be improved. Um, Rebecca's very frustrated that we haven't been able to, to do more quicker. And I'm hoping that the slower holiday time will allow her some time to, to work on that, and we've had a couple of people volunteer help us, so we're gonna work with one of them.
So do we want to limit it to government speech forums, or the platforms do not allow any public comments?
I, 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 I would...
I think it's important to have discussion.
I, I think it's important on the Facebook account to allow comment.
And leave it. It also doesn't represent us.
I'm sorry?
If, if three taxpayers want to get in this heated debate, leave it. It's discussion.
Right.
Has nothing to do with the page, the administrators.
Right, right.
That's down. It's the internet.
And I think we should be in that forum, but we should do it in a very intentional way, which is what this, this policy, um, allows, because that's how people are communicating anyway, and if we're not there, we're, we're not part of the conversation. Um, we are, like, just inherently, we have to be more measured in, in how we communicate, just because it's complicated. Like, a lot of times it's not easy to, to answer.
Is this set in stone? Is there a time limit on this policy?
No, but we, it's, it would be...
Let's try it. I mean, it seems like it's the standard to what other, what they're recommending.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, the one thing that needs to be updated is the no anonymous. Um, so if you approve it, so, you know, including updating no anonymous, um, we'll just start. We, we need to take it before the village also. Um, and it'll be one policy for both, is what we're recommending. Hopefully you guys are okay with that. Um, and it, it does, we do have more, uh, I think we have more, um, allowance to if there's profanity, you know, things that are, um, there's a word for it. Actually, it does say anonymous posting shall not be allowed, so that might already be covered.
There's plenty of other pages available for that kind of behavior. It's gonna be a town of Rockingham, I think, you know, it's gonna be pretty boring. Those kind of people will find their place where they can go beat them, play the awful wall.
And we do, and we'll delete the ones if they're, um, yeah, it's not inoffensive. There's a word for it. Um, comments, like, it's, basically if it's inappropriate is, is, is the word they use, and that's on page five, where it has all, all these examples, like disruptively...
Inappropriate is a good condition.
Yeah, disruptively repetitive content. Like, if someone keeps saying something that's just, just there to be annoying, again and again and again, we, we can delete that.
Maybe that's not annoying to them. If it's inappropriate, that's different.
Well, disruptively, that's, that's an example of something that is inappropriate. So, um, like threats of violence, that's pretty obvious, right? Um, conduct that violates law, that's pretty obvious. So I, I, I mean, I give it a go, we'll see. Um, there's some, some things we can do. Um, South Burlington uses theirs pretty effectively, and I went to a session about that at, um, town meeting or town fair. And one example that they do is they do, they'll have live, um, Facebook forums or, uh, sessions at a particular time, let's say, noon on Friday, if you're interested in substance such. It'll be some issue that's happening in town. And so staff manns the site, and so people can write in questions, and then you have time to, to look up the answers. You know, you, you can have the staff people there to, to have all the answers, and you can respond. And you don't have to respond within thirty seconds, but you want to respond within, say, five, ten minutes, and, and have a, a conversation. And then people can ask questions, people who don't want to come to meetings or, or don't want to, you know, send emails or, um, go through other forums. So it, I, I think if we could do good things...
I think it's being answered. I, I'm always worried about liability, so... Are you talking about having a Facebook page for the town to put out announcements like red accident at Red Light Hill around town halls closing early? I mean, there are some, it strikes me that, you know, on some of like the state police, I'm not sure, maybe Bellis Falls Police, I'm not really sure. But not every government or body has a common feature, and they do that for a reason. Because there are people who are sitting at home all day, saying nasty stuff online, and it's in print, everyone sees it. And it does open up whoever is running the site, basically actuarial, I think, to liability. And the other way, you have to have someone literally, you know, watch it.
I really don't think, well, that's one of the reasons I don't think we need a comment, uh, option, because...
People can send a message.
Certainly, I don't want town or village employees babysitting a computer, thinking or waiting for somebody to may say a comment, expecting an answer in ten minutes or a couple of minutes.
Neither, but I think whoever's gonna run it, I think, needs to, it's gonna be a commitment, because the example I used for having this page was when Parker Hill and Brockway's Milk were both closed the other morning. My friend Joe's a teacher. He finds out on his own. So, those are kinds of things. So as soon as you hear from the highway, somebody hears from the highway, whoever's running this page.
Right.
Because it was, the state police didn't put it out, the Bellis Falls Police didn't put it out, town of Rockingham can go...
Oh, I agree. The, you know, don't want to have that.
And then, nobody needs to comment on that.
Right, that's...
And then other stuff like, you know, immediate information or, you know...
I just don't want to...
The north side of the village is, is out of power.
I just don't want to invite them into a full-time position or a part-time position or something.
Yeah, no, and, and we don't either.
Nobody needs to comment. Nobody responds to the...
The level of betrayal that is on some of these other sites, when just someone says, hey, there was an accident, and all of a sudden you've got twenty-four people making personal potshots at each other, and then someone else is like, stop, you know? It was like, it just all...
Yeah, I mean, we could not have comments if you, if that's what you guys want. I just think that'll be an issue for comment on other sites.
No, if they want to make a, my feeling is if they want to make a co- comment, they can come to a select board or, or a trustees meeting, I mean, it's not a public free for all. These meetings are, this is a meeting of the select board. It's a public meeting, but it's not a public free for all. That's a quote one secretary of state from a few years ago, and I like that quote. Same thing with this session, if, you know, they want to comment, they can send you an email.
They got, they got three minutes in these meetings.
Or they can copy up, keep you up to date.
Fourteen, fourteen characters.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I think, I think go with it and see what happens.
With the comments?
No.
Or not?
I, I personally, I personally, I think it's important. I don't think it's gonna be like some of the other stuff. I think it's gonna be pretty dull and pretty informative, and, and it's gonna attract a different, that's how I feel. So I could, I could carry it the way.
Yeah.
I don't think it's important somebody comments on Brockway's Milk, Parker Hill closed, but I think if someday we get into a nice history piece, like growing up on Bellis Falls page, I think is, is fabulous, the amount of people in history in there, so...
Yeah, but that's also heavily moderated, heavily moderated, we keep that there.
But it's also a pretty good crowd.
And that's what I worry about, having too much staff time, heavily moderating. I mean, maybe we could start with comments, if we can put in the, but I, I, if people are, I, I don't think we need the comments, but if we did, you'd have to say, okay, this is a trial period. If it's not civil, comments will be cut down, but I have a feeling it's, I, people, people will...
You're leaning aggressively.
That's where I disagree. It reminds me of these police departments, when you go to their site, there's a disclaimer there. If you need the police, do not send an email, dial nine-one-one. You know, someone's gonna say, oh, I need to, or, I just worry about the liability. I'm also concerned with the comments, but, you know...
Liability now.
Well, you ask a question, you don't get it answered in a timely fashion, or if it's not ac- answered accurately.
Nowhere ever did we promote that, that we were gonna answer your question.
Well, I think the no comment option is better, but it's, you know...
I don't really care either way. I don't think it's gonna be a rowdy page. I think it's gonna be exactly, that's how I feel.
I'm not, I'm not, rowdy's just an element. I'm just saying, I don't want this to mush, we already get a lot of employees. I don't think this should mush, could mushroom in the future to someone who's gonna have to moderate or pay attention that time to, to every time somebody will ask a question, every several minutes or however.
Yeah, I think more of the effort is gonna be in deciding what we're going to post, because one of the things that we did...
I'll monitor that thing.
I'm sorry?
I'll monitor that page.
Yeah, and, and I think actually what would happen in reality is if someone posts something inappropriate, you guys and other people would monitor it and let us know.
Right, you know what?
But, but we'll spend more time trying to figure out what to put on the page, because when we put something out, we check it, and it's...
Are you gonna be checking it at three in the morning, and somebody posts something at three in the morning, or someone posts something at midnight?
Someone will be, actually, I know a couple of people that, not me, no.
That's not a reasonable expectation, no. I, I think no comments is the, you know...
No, we could do no comments. I mean, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, we, we...
I just think it's important that we have a page.
Oh, wait.
Yes, we push stuff out.
We can, you know, we can wait till we have a full board to get everyone's opinion, but I mean, I just think...
I'm gonna move that we approve the social media policy as presented and authorized as select board members to sign the policy.
Can you add, adding the anonymous thing? Because it's not exactly the way. I thought it was in there, but it just says it can't, the postings can't be anonymous.
Exactly.
Uh, uh, just that municipal officials cannot post.
And to add to it that the municipal officials cannot create anonymous...
Accounts.
Accounts to engage in any way.
Yeah.
Well, is it purpose, municipal official, official?
I guess, well, municipal officials includes employees and also includes you guys.
Yeah.
Hey, we need a second, because we had an issue here back...
Need a second.
We need a second before we... I'll second it for discussion, alright. The village had an issue some years ago where...
I'm just going to ask them, but you...
Okay, no, go ahead.
No, you know what, you, you can go ahead, you know where...
Well, there was some comments, or a comment that was made on, uh, on company time. And then it was, well, you can make your comments on your personal time, lunchtime or your break time, but not on the company time.
Right.
So, uh, that was during the, uh, may have been during the Bergen administration, when she was village president, but...
We still have that issue.
Well, yeah, and that's what I wanted to avoid. I mean, that's what I say, the comments opens up a Pandora's box at times, and, um, you know, so if I, okay, I'm, if I'm considered an employee and I want to say something that someone may not like, or may, may, may be derogatory, I'll just have my friend do it because he can, or he or she can do it, but I mean, that's what I'm saying, it just opens too much up. I, I agree with the idea of informing people, hey, the road's closed, the bottom of Red Light Hill probably closed for next three hours due to the water main break or whatever. But, um, I just don't want to see this coming into a, a part-time job, or whether it be volunteers or whoever, or a full-time job in the future. Someone's gonna have to answer the question at three o'clock in the morning, and I want, you know, I want an answer within the next ten minutes, because...
And you don't have to. I don't, I think we're losing the...
I think we're opening up too much.
If you're gonna...
Who says you have to answer anybody? Where does it say that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, you have no questions, no comments, you don't have to worry about answering anything.
I think...
If I get a situation, it could be a scenario where someone needs an answer right off, and they think they can get it through this website, and it doesn't...
It doesn't say that anywhere.
But it doesn't come, and then we've got a liability, because, you know, I, I put it on your website and nobody answered me, now I got this problem and it's...
Yeah, I don't think there's a liability, just because, especially we're doing a policy that is recommended by V L C.
Well, I understand this, the policy, but what I'm saying, if we're getting back to the comment topic, that's why you go to some of these police department websites or, or fire ambulance, they say, if you have an emergency, don't send an email, dial nine-one-one.
That may not be a liability, that may just be a advice thing.
Well, I, I, I just don't think comments are a wise thing to have there. If they want to make comments to help the website or something about the website, they can contact you, you get an open door policy, right? Or they can come to a public meeting, or they can contact either one of us representatives on the phone, via email, or a little written letter.
Alright, we got, we've got a motion on the table. Uh, do we want to do anything with that motion? It says this, the last page says this is being adopted as of whenever, we want to have it signed today and then come back again in another two weeks, or have somebody stop in, or everybody stop in and sign it when it's changed and made?
Yes, the second one. Sign in after you, sign in, assuming it's approved.
Sign in after you, yeah, sorry. This is approved with comments, because that's what we, the policy...
Correct, it's, it's, um...
It's, it's a fake account more than this, because it's some...
Correct, anonymous account, yeah.
But as in, an anonymous account, you wouldn't have a name, and you would, like, don't know what you do. So I think the correct term is like, those people were making fake accounts under...
Sure, okay, I'll do anonymous slash fake, yeah.
Anonymous would be like, how do you even know they're commenting? Because there's no one behind them, but...
Well, that was kind of like...
them, but, yeah, the camera would be Charles Steiner, who's not really a person.
Okay, so-
Yeah, false, like, false.
Yes.
Yeah. So, this is called, for limited public forum, social media, so this policy will have to be posted on Facebook if we go with it, it is, so people know that they will get booted off if they violate this policy, and that has to be very clear and clear, because we don't want someone saying, as people have, you've blocked us-
There's your liability stepping.
You've blocked us from our, our, our right to speak, and our right, you know, so that could happen, and now, so that's what I, I worry about, but as long as people who are posting know that their comment could be taken down if it's violated, so.
Well, there's many ways to do it, there's many, many, many ways to do it, I'm, I'm sure you guys have been working on it, but you want it so people can't post to your page. They can comment.
Right, right, no, no, they can't post that, that's right.
You can make, you can turn off the thing, so they can't comment with a photo, you don't want that. You want words, you don't want the, the gift things, whatever.
And only three of us would be authorized to post stuff, is what we're thinking now.
Great, can we vote?
We'll try it out, I, I, we may be visiting this, but I guess we can- Oh, yeah, right, I, I expect we will, and, but, and that's okay, it's just, it's, it's an important forum to be part of.
Yeah.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries.
Okay.
So, you want to sign this thing tonight, so?
No, no.
I just want to make the comment too, it's not because of, if people may pick on me, you know what, if they're picking on me, they're giving somebody else a break.
I thought you were going back to the select board, we had chastised on, select board, I mean, down.
Oh, we didn't have emails back then, or public, about thirty years ago, maybe.
Okay, uh, review and end up in next meeting, so we know we're gonna have-
Well, the budget is gonna be number one.
Yeah.
So, some other things, they're pretty short things, I think, the Wyndham Winter Housing Trust wants to do a Vermont Community Development Grant Financing for the garage project, and that needs to go through the town, so hopefully that won't be complicated. I mean, you guys would have done that before, right? Does that sound familiar?
Yeah.
Um, and then, possibly, but this, this I can push off if, if you want me to, the Finance and Maintenance Agreement for the Church Street Bridge, the, the New Arch Bridge. Really, the decision to be made there is about the lights, but we can push that off to the fourteenth if you want.
Alright.
The fourteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, and then a access permit, Saxon River Academy Avenue, that would be an easy one, I think. It wasn't ready for this meeting. Planning Commission and Energy Subcommittee, they're gonna have appointments, that should be pretty straightforward, no big deal. Something Gary's working on is an article, and I think you talked about this, for repairs of the TLR roof, I think that should go on the fourteenth instead of the seventh, just to allow time, because that might be a complicated one. And then I don't know, we received a municipal planning grant, I don't know if there's a formal process to accept that or not. That just came in today, so I, I, I don't know if that'll have to go to you guys at all.
We, if we approve the plan for it, there's really no sense of, we got it, it was just some-
Yes, I just had a question mark on that, so-
About just making the fact that we didn't get the grant, that's, you know, in your management report.
Oh, so then, so the things that would be on it are the budget, the Wyndham Winter Housing Trust Grant Financing, Academy.
Hedy Green and Kuta.
I was gonna just-
Oh, yeah, Hedy Green, oh, yeah.
Now, we're gonna probably put him on the top of the sus-
Oh, yeah, well, that'll be the executive session.
So, we don't, we don't contribute and charge a hundred and quarter an hour.
Right, no, I totally agree.
Plus, Stefan, who's really-
Well, you know, not to keep going on and on, but Stefan's comment earlier about lawyer costs, like, we, we, we spent a lot of money on him leading up to this, sending him to probate, so, you know, you're asking about that cost, and did we get recouped, and now the town's, you know, we spent money in this situation. Here's more money, another example.
Right, but sometimes you have to have an attorney.
Right.
I know we do, but we, how much have we spent on this process to essentially?
Yeah, like, like, so, I paid it not to-
But anyways.
Yes, yeah, and I can, yeah, so, so that would be executive session, and I think we should do it before the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Just because-
Again, I reiterate that, you know, I watched this like, five times, and I went away again each time with the impression that it would not be, there would be no transaction of a sale, unless certain criteria was met, with a certain, I guess, so to speak, promise or understanding.
Yeah, I know, I remember talking about that too, so, okay. So, all right, so then there could be a joint board meeting on the twenty-eighth, the only thing that we've gotten a request for is the alumni parade, so maybe have a quick joint board meeting on the twenty-eighth, and then have select board plan for budget, if, if needed. Okay. I mean, we may not need it, especially if we do it Saturday.
When do we have to do all the, the warning and everything for the meeting?
The end of January, or, in, it, it's basically, we, we need to do it in time to get the books printed before, ten days before the meeting, so we're, we're using twenty-second of February, I think, is our ultimate, ultimate deadline, but we want to give ourselves some cushion. The printer is out of commission for a little bit, so we have one quote for printing the books, so we're getting other quotes.
Is that printing?
The across the street printer here. So, we're getting other quotes for printing the books.
Okay. Ready to review and approve board, it's Bill Lawrence?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor would vote aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, motion carries, other business, the panel?
Sure. In the beginning, did you, how was white guy, did you say that in the beginning?
Uh, I didn't go into detail, because it's-
Did he's healthy?
He's okay, he's getting better.
He's coming back?
Yeah, hopefully, if it's, if he gets cleared by the doctor, hopefully Monday.
And the truck that was in the incident?
Yeah, I don't know when it will be back, it's getting repaired.
And then the other truck, we were, what was the answer, we were maxed out on?
Uh, that our insurance deductible had been paid, so there weren't, there wouldn't be any cost, which is actually, that's the case with the second truck too, because our insurance deductible was paid.
And then, and just to make anyone watching that lives in Rockingham, and the manager, and Michael here, so, a former select board member notified me about something, so I watched the Grafton Select Board meeting, anybody else?
Yeah.
And there's a building that borders, literally, Cambridge Park and Grafton, where they're working hard to, there's a large amount of chemicals, it's a chemical mixing company, and this one chemical in particular is really, really not good, and there's a lot of it, so, I think it's important, because folks living in, in our district are getting fumes, and if something goes wrong there, it would be really bad, so the surrounding fire departments should also know in the event something goes wrong there, so, they seem to be really on top of it, as to moving forward to fix the issue.
Grafton is?
Yes, and the state, and maybe Chuck wants to be aware, and, because if you live in Rockingham, and you're near that place, you're, you're getting, you're potentially getting the fumes, the vapors, every day from this product, which is, you're not supposed to.
Yeah, I just heard about it, Susan.
So, that's it, and it's just to make, it's, it would be a bad, bad incident if something happened out there.
Do you know the name of the chemical?
Ethyl acetate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't, don't they go stone, uh-
Different company.
Different company.
So, they're all working there too, alongside this place, and like, it's, I read the whole hazmat thing, they've got seven hundred gallons of it, and then they, I guess, mix for a month, and then take a month off, it's really bizarre. It was all-
We don't have any sort of permitting for stuff like that, you know, like, just operations, we don't have any sort of business permit.
On the state level, you have to, you have to, you can't have the work, working conditions like that.
Some towns have things where you, you get to operate a business, you have to have a permit, so I don't, but, anyway, yeah, I just heard about it, we're, we'll, yeah, the government is checking into the state and the, all the various agencies that would be overseeing this, to make sure everything is kosher, and, I mean, they don't think it is.
Right, okay, so they're gonna notify A and R and all those people? Yes, they've already, they've already done, they're in that process, the government is in that process, but it would be good, I mean, I guess you sent something off to Sean, right, and you did too, so, so they're in loop now, which is, so thank you for notifying us of this.
Thanks, Scott.
Should we have a name?
Hmm?
Um, no.
Stefan?
I just want to reiterate the same thing that, that Gaetalon heard, I watched the Grafton Select Board meeting, and I don't know enough, your Bellis Falls Board of Trustees is hoping to meet with the North Walthall Village Commissioners to talk about some issues, such as the Violet's Bridge and the Arch Bridge, and I just want to interject that I feel that, I understand that we've been paying for the light on this side, but I really think the town of Walthall should step up and play, and cover the cost to build the three lights on the bridge. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Doesn't appear to be a need for an executive session tonight, so.
Let's do it here.
Motion's made.
Do we need a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second, can just sign it easy, and we're out of there. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?